That's it?
Any questions for Ann Marie on the Wellness Committee? All right, hearing none, we will move on to the Community Ed Report, which is also Ann Marie.
Okay, so Community Ed, just two things to report on. Kids World finished up its Minnesota School Age Care Association accreditation process. We will learn in sixty to ninety days whether we are accredited at our Roosevelt site or not. Todd Susker was able to participate in the accreditation visit, and I thank you for that very much. I heard it went well, so I'm hopeful. The other piece of news is that our college ambition starts today. Our CAST program, who has had a Vista, Americor Vista, named Maureen Harrington, she'll be ending her service this month and going on to teach for America in Minneapolis, that program. So I think she was going into a different sort of career path, but since we've had her here in Faribault, she's chosen to really think about education as her future. So we appreciate all of the things that she's done and we'll miss her very much. So that's it.
Thank you, Ann Marie. Any questions for Ann Marie on Community Ed? All right, hearing none, we'll move along.
Okay, thank you.
That brings us to item ten, Other Matters, starting with item ten A, Food Service Year-End Report.
Good evening. My name is Tim Cockham. I'm the new Food Service Director, so it's been a pleasure here in my first year to really help impact kids and have some fun with some of the staff here. So this is a little snapshot of just kind of what our year and what we've been able to do here at the Faribault School District. So this is a great picture. This is a very fun one we were able to take. This is actually at Roosevelt with our A to Z Salad Bar. So those are our local kids having a great time eating fruits and vegetables. Next one is our operations. Obviously, a very busy month for us. This has been audit month, or I'm sorry, an audit year. So we have had two NSF audits, which is a very complex audit. It's fully paid for by Sedexo. It covers everything from training, you know, food temperatures, proper hand washing, all those types of items. Again, golds, this is our seventeenth consecutive year with golds in both schools. So another audit we had was our Minnesota Department of Education. So this is an audit that has to do with the amounts of food that we're serving, you know, the proportion, the nutrition, all those types of things. And that was about a two-day audit that we got good passing scores on as well. This is something that Andy touched base on, was just about the increase in meal prices. So again, just going up ten cents. And then the next slide here will show you just kind of where we're at with the region. So if you see, we are the second lowest, from what I can tell, in the big nine for school meal prices. This is just a little part of some of the innovations that we're doing here. This was a picture from the high school here. We did, got a little press from the Faribault Daily News, just having a little apple tasting contest. So this was a fun, interactive contest with the kids. They got to go onto Google Docs and fill out a little survey. Got some great prizes donated, just kind of celebrating National Apple Month. Kids had a great time, just a good way for them to kind of think of food in a different light. Some more innovations. There's a picture in the top left corner there. That was a little blood orange tasting to some kindergarteners at Roosevelt. That was fun. Sometimes food can be scary when it's different colors and something you're maybe not used to or aware of. So we showed them that blood oranges can taste good, so we had a little fun there. Another great contest that we do is the Dr. Seuss Contest. So that supports the National Read Across America contest or month. And kids get to either draw or they write stories, depending on their age, you know, into their contest per school. So we hand out little prizes of hats and Dr. Seuss pencils, and all those are really well received by the students and the teachers as well. Another thing that we've been able to do here at the high school is starting to spice it up a little bit with enlightening of the HHFKA and healthier food. One of the things that can really help your food taste better is a little bit of heat. So we got a little pepper bar there, it's kind of a picture. So we got some fresh jalapenos, poblano, some different peppers, for kids to be able to spice up their tacos a little bit. Another thing we've also done is a salsa bar. So again, just trying to create some fresh foods for them to be able to taste and have some new flavors. All right, so the A to Z Salad Bar. So this is a kind of a long, we've been doing this for a couple of years here now. We've done a little twist on it this year. We have, we are actually in conjunction with the Wellness Committee, we have kind of added it, have been able to bring this to different schools. So the kids get to eat it one day, and the next day, the staff gets to participate. So this is funded by the Wellness Committee in support with Sedexo that we're able to provide this. So it's a fun A to Z Salad Bar, where they get to mix their own vegetables, fruits, and all those types of things. So a nice little note there from Lauren, but very well received by the staff, and it's a good way to enlighten them to some new fruits and vegetables. All right, so one of the ways we like to support the Faribault School District is obviously through educational excellence. So one of the great feathers, I think, we've been able to add is supporting the ALC. So this is the first year we've been able to actually provide breakfast and hot meals for the ALC. I've spoken with Andy there, as well as Margaret, and the nice thing is we've been able to decrease absence during meal periods by thirty percent. So I think that's a pretty nice thing to be able to let the students know that when there's food there, sometimes it helps them get there a little more, stay there a little longer. So I think that's a good thing that we're able to help with there. So another thing is we were able to work with Nicole, as well as, our teachers are super, so we just had this recently with National Teachers Week. So we were able to do soups. So we did a bacon and chicken wild rice soup across to every building. So there was a lot of running going on, because there's quite a few buildings here, but I think it was well received by staff, and it was a very nice gesture, thanking them for all their hard efforts that the teachers do on a daily basis. All right, so the next two graphs. So this one's breakfast here, and this is just participation, you know, with our kind of broken out between free, reduced, and paid. So, you know, obviously, we look a lot in how can we help, you know, different students at different levels, you know, how can we help feed more? Because we know, you know, hunger is a big issue, and we want to make sure we're minimizing that as much as we can. So with the, obviously, the elementary is a more captive audience, as well as the middle school. The high school, there's some different things, you know, open campus and different things like that that also affect this. You know, I think it just goes with the grades, too. I think the younger you are, the more apt you are to eat breakfast every day, and as you get older, it's just not as important. So I'll be talking a little later about some of the actions we're taking to increase our participation. So lunch here, again, you can see the elementary kids. You know, the only part, you know, the free, there's a twenty-one percent of the free opportunity that aren't eating lunch. So we're getting most of the kids, you know, we're continuing to try to add new foods that they like and making sure that things are presentable, and we're doing a lot of batch cooking to keep food nice and fresh for the kids. The middle school, doing pretty well, again, captive audience, which helps a lot, but we've seen good participation through the middle school. High school as well, you know, there's a lot of variables as well, but we feel that we're making some good strides in to try to keep the students here to get some good, well-balanced meals. And I think this is part of a big process, just trying to re-educate, you know, palates and just what's, you know, I think if you have your choice of a school meal here, you get to go to Taco John's or something that's full of salt and whatever, you know, trying to win that balance back. I think that's a time, but I think it's a battle we're working on really good. Some other things that we do to support. So again, some of the additional donations. We just had a Fun, last Friday, I believe it was, the Run for Fun Girls. So we helped support that. That was a fun little event for the girls here at the district. Wellness, I've had a great time sitting on some of the Wellness Committees and then also the student subcommittee there, and just kind of reorganizing how we're working on the lingo and keeping it positive. So another great thing we're doing here is we started serving after-school meals at the middle school. So the middle school, after two-thirty, we used to serve snacks. And, you know, for some of the seventh and eighth graders, that may be eating pretty early, you know, they're pretty hungry after school. And to ask them to stay after school for, you know, additional education sometimes, maybe they're too hungry and can't really pay attention. So now we're able to, we're providing meals after school. So maybe it's a chicken patty with some fruit and a milk, things like that, something more substantial than just like a cheese stick and a juice box type thing. Because, you know, we're realizing we're dealing with more calorie needs than maybe, you know, we were addressing prior. On the right, you'll see a nice letter just from Elise Rolstead. We worked very well with the Step Transition Program here in just trying to give those students. And, you know, I just, it's been great to see how much of a positive impact we can have on some of those students and their daily life, and how important work can be to their schedule and creating great environments. So I'll let you read that at your leisure. Community, so I got painted green. I was called the Hulk for a couple of days because of a fun little event that we had at the middle school. I'm sure you heard about, but what a great event. I was happy to be a part of it. We were happy to sponsor it. Freddie the Falcon was very fun that day, so we had a good time with that. But great event, we're happy to be a part of that. Some of the other things coming up here is we have the, we are doing three sites this year for the summer food service program. So we are going to have it at the high school, which we're adding back as a central location. So I know last year, we just did the middle school in Roosevelt to support STEAM, and that continues to grow. We are also aware of the large amount of students and activity that happens here at the high school. So we have added the high school as a summer meal program to be able to support the needs of all the students that will be here this summer. All right, so the future, what's coming up? So we got some great things. I was able to be a part of a Future Chef's. It's a great Sedexo program. We'll be introducing that here next year. And what that is, is where, you know, for elementary kids, they're able to submit a recipe. We pick winning recipes, and they get to come produce them. Their parents get to watch, grandparents get to watch. It's kind of a fun thing for a student to be a young chef. So I went up to Elk River, one of our accounts up there, and kind of watched and learned on how to operate that system. But we're looking forward to bringing that here next year. Another innovation here, thing that we're doing, is the ship program. So, you know, Mike and Angie have been doing a great job there, and it's been great to support them. We are working on a new kids cafe that'll be right outside in the lobby. And what that is, it's kind of a what's your healthy? So just trying to introduce and support a healthy lifestyle, which is, you know, through exercise and nutrition and all those types of things, and also in an effort to increase breakfast consumption. I know some middle schoolers aren't always hungry that early in the morning. Socializing sometimes can be more of the route they want to take. So if we can create a new environment, we're hoping to increase participation and meet that need. Another thing also is here at the high school, we realize that we're not captivating as much of our audience as we'd like to. So we are looking now and working on getting express lines away from the cafeteria. Because again, I think socializing and that type of thing is very popular at this age. So how can we bring breakfast to them? So we're working right now on getting some quotes, and we'll be looking forward to moving forward with this early in the spring. So questions I can answer for you? Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just a comment with, yeah, Tim has been pretty modest. He's done a great job this whole year of creating very wonderful programs for our kids and great choices for our kids, and, you know, getting the thumbs up from the crowd behind you, too. But, Sedexo and Tim, I really appreciate all that you've done this year to help us out.
Great, thank you. My pleasure.
Okay, and this then brings us to item ten B, Consider Approval of 2015 Summer Custodial Positions.
This again is, we do this on an annual basis. We do our summer employment help for our custodial services, so part of the budget.
Move approval.
With a motion and a second to approve the 2015 Summer Custodial Positions. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And this brings us to item ten C, Consider Approval of the Faribault Middle School Close-Up Student Trip Proposal. And the Curriculum Committee heard this proposal this past week. Look forward to seeing it again.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Mara Halverson. I teach seventh grade language arts at the middle school.
And I'm Scott Bruins. I'm the seventh grade socialist teacher and avid elective teacher.
About a year and a half ago, we went to the Amley Concert, or concert, Conference when it was here, I wish it was a concert, in Minnesota. And one big thing that Scott and I took away from that conference was that we really wanted to do more for our students, get them more out into the community, out into the country to see the world, basically. Let them have some of the experiences that we've been able to have so far.
And so one of the things that popped up at the conference was there were a lot of organizations there promoting student trips to various parts of the country and around the world. And as I thought about my students, Mara, as well, one of the trips that kept popping up is a trip to Washington DC for our seventh and eighth grade students in the middle school. Partly because in seventh grade, I teach a lot, I teach mostly American history standards. And the location of Washington DC has that epicenter of those standards as places to visit, the founding fathers, and those standards that connect. And so that was kind of the highlight of where we wanted our trip to kind of go.
And from the language arts perspective, so much of the trip, because it is student-based and educational-based, has many of the language arts standards that we see from the state of Minnesota to primarily based around writing. So we really feel that this would be a great experience for our 21st century students and moving forward with all the initiatives that we are within the district. What we have done is we've contacted a couple of different travel companies and got some quotes from different places, and we decided that we would like to go with the one, it's called Close-Up Washington DC. And they provide trained instructors to ensure that students have a rewarding and fun experience, that they're learning valuable lessons that connect to both those social studies standards and also the language arts standards.
So our goal would be to, as we kind of look at the how we would do this, our goal is really to get next year's, target this program to next year's seventh and eighth graders and start promoting this within the school, the middle school, start fundraising for the students who would need that support. And I think that's kind of where our target would be.
So it would be our current sixth and seventh graders, it would be for them. So when they're finished with seventh grade and when they're finished with eighth grade, those two groups, we would be taking them on a trip.
So when it would be, basically, after school is done in June, it would be that week after school has completed next school year. So everything would be wrapped up for their studies here, and then we could take that trip to DC to kind of enhance what we've talked about in the classroom, to experience what we've talked about in the classroom.
So we're actually looking at two different weeks, because the program is a four-day program, and they always start on Sunday. So it would be that first or second week, right after school gets out. The big question is always how much? The representative that we've been talking with has quoted us out at sixteen forty-five per student, and that would include all travel expenses, flight, so air and ground transportation, food, hotel, chaperones overnight for the students sitting out in the hallways, basically. The program costs for the mini-conferences that they'll be in, those sites that they get to visit, and then any materials that go along with that.
Yeah, so, any questions?
I think that's, I mean, we have a whole list of fundraising options as well.
We have a whole list of fundraising options that we've just been brainstorming, and we've added to those, that list over the last couple of weeks, just talking to various people. But our hope is that we can fundraise as much as possible so we can allow any student who is interested to have the opportunity to go on this trip. Since we've never done anything like this before, we don't really know how many students would be interested in it, and we really wanted to make sure that we had the support of the district curriculum committee and also the school board before we mentioned it to the students. Because we didn't want to get them excited about something that would maybe not be a possibility for them.
I'm glad you put on there the GoFundMe site. I think it was this weekend, I read an article about a young lady that just got her seventy thousand dollar per year MBA to Harvard, paid for in two weeks. Seventy thousand, she got ninety thousand. So it's like we talked about at the other committee you presented at, it's a powerful tool, and it's out there, and so great work going in researching this stuff.
Any other questions?
Is there a cap on the number of students, or that you can, no, so that every student signed up?
No, there's not. I mean, right now, if this is possible, our vision is to take a Washington DC trip every other year. So students who are finished with seventh or eighth grade, they'll have the opportunity to go. It's for every teacher, for every chaperone, we can have one teacher per ten students. And then they obviously have their tour guides and other chaperones there, too. So we're hoping to get as many students as we can who would like to go.
That's kind of the hidden thing in here as well. I mean, I don't know if we directly stated, but there is some staff development in this that for every, I think, is it ten students? For every ten students, a teacher or a chaperone can go for free. And there's that workshop, the service learning that's there for the teachers as well to kind of get some training as well, to bring that back to other students the next year. So that's in there as well for those who can go.
Mr. Chair, I have two questions. Does anybody recall the last time we had students from our district go to Close-Up time? Mr. Olson did this years ago.
Yeah, Mr. Olson, I know. That's the person I get kind of told who used to do this when Lyle Olson was teaching, I think at the high school, I think he used to run. I think the actual Close-Up program here at the high school, if I'm not mistaken.
That was several years ago.
Yes, yeah.
Second thing is, once the account is set up, parents can deposit throughout the course of the whole year to help.
That is correct. So Close-Up, the conversations that I've had with them, if we get their approval, they'll actually set up an account through their company, and the students will have their own personal account. So the parents can deposit money if they want. Any fundraising that we do, we'd have to set up an account, I'm sure, with the district, and then we're planning on taking those funds and dispersing them evenly throughout the students, however many students we have. One question that came up at the curriculum meeting was for students who may not be able to afford any of the funds. And we had some really great ideas that evening, just maybe having people in the community or businesses or-
Scholarship-type deal.
Scholarship-type deals, like basically funding or sponsoring a student. So there's that option, too.
Some schools have opened up an angel fund to help offset.
Any further questions?
Well, just a comment, you couldn't pick two better leaders to support this program and lead this program. So I commend both of you to-
Thank you.
On initiative for this, so. And as a person that's been on a field trip to Washington DC three times, I was with seniors, so it wasn't too bad. Putting a seventh and eighth grader on the, well, you're going on a plane, though, you're not riding a bus, which is good.
So there's one with chaperones. Sounding like the volunteer.
Any further questions?
I'll move approval.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Faribault Middle School Close-Up Student Trip Proposal. Any further discussion or questions?
Sounds really fun. Thank you for the-
Another chaperone. Volunteers pop up everywhere.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing no further questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And thank you guys so much for putting that proposal together. All right, this brings us to item ten D. And ten D and E might really kind of filter into each other. This is a discussion for us to look at some of the items that we have been talking about in recent months for additions to the district, as well as discussing the amount that the board is comfortable with as a potential approval. So in item ten E, let me make sure I'm looking at the right place, item ten D.
So D, E, and F kind of all go together.
Yeah. They're not labeled on my computer, which is why I need to check a little bit. So there was a request by a board member to see the job description for the service learning coordinator. So that is one of the items for us to be able to look at. There is a new spreadsheet with some of the budget items that we have looked at. So the additional programs to review. You can see the list of items that were rated most favorable by the school board at our last work session.
I'd like to just, oops, sorry. I'd like to point out, on the 2015-16 Budget Considerations worksheet, those numbers did change a little bit. So like I mentioned earlier, we've been reviewing and reviewing and making sure that we have the best data that we do. And we went back to the drawing board and looked at the proposals and made sure that the numbers we were giving you were correct. And part of what the change was is, especially at the elementaries, our original proposals, we backed off numbers because some of those positions are included in the AdSIS budget. So we wanted to make sure that the numbers we're presenting to you are really the needs after taking out those two FTEs per building with the AdSIS budget. So that's why you're seeing a different number than you did at the work session. The total at the work session was six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, and that gets adjusted now to the six hundred and twenty-nine thousand that you see.
All right, thank you, Andy. And then the one last item was the, so that we have them in our mind, is things we have talked about were the additional 2015-26 Budget Considerations, so things such as the request for an additional high school assistant principal, two custodians. The general education per professionals, I think, was a mistake to add on here because those items are actually included in the individual elementary requests. So that is actually not a separate request. And then the one, high school media, which was a part of the original levy discussion. Those were items that the board saw in a less favorable light than those that are on the list of budget considerations. But they were on there, and we wanted to make sure they were in front of you this evening as we had this discussion, in case anyone wanted to bring them back into the discussion. So those are some items of information. The next part of our discussion will be to think about what amount the board is comfortable with. Is there, are there any questions about this information? Not discussing at this moment which of those we approve or not, but is this information sort of clear to everyone?
Jason, can I just ask you a question? This information's clear. A week ago Monday, a week ago tonight, excuse me, last Monday, we had kind of talked about a five hundred thousand dollar number. Then the additional students was sent to us. So what is the new, if we're still going off of that five hundred thousand dollar kind of baseline number, what's the new number that we should be considering?
Yeah, so I think that's a good, I want to have that discussion next. So I think that's the major focus of the next discussion, so let's just come back to that in two seconds. I think it came up and then sat down. We, Todd asked me to also, and I think this- Todd asked me to, to also, and I think this is a good idea, as we enter into this discussion, for us to ask some more leadership from the district to give us a sense of, of their recommendations for how we to look at these. Following their, their comments, I think that we want to get exactly to your question, Chad, which is also what Jerry wanted to talk about at the last work session. So we will certainly do that next. So Colleen and Nicole, and Andy as well, if you guys would like to share with us your thoughts for how we should be looking at this when we, when we go into this, we would appreciate that.
Well, as I stated earlier, when, with the revised numbers, we are looking at increasing our budget next year, or our revenues over expenses next year of about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than, than you had to work with last week when you were, when you were at the work session. So like, like Jason said, ultimately, it's up to you as a board to, to get a feeling for a comfort level as to how much you do want to add next year, but I just want to point that out, that that is, that does increase what we have available by about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Are there any questions specifically to the finance part that I can answer right now?
Well, because we're at the public meeting, maybe we could just review that that includes, that's based on a one percent increase.
Right, yes, thank you for saying that. That does assume a one percent increase in the formula allowance from the legislature. So, yes, just a little bit before the meeting, they hadn't reached a decision yet, so that is definitely subject to change.
Other questions for Andy?
And that includes for the negotiations?
Yep, and it includes a three percent settlement for the negotiations, that we would assume a three percent settlement in, next year and then the following year as well. And I do want to point out that for each percent that the, that the state would increase our formula allowance, that it would increase our state funding by about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
All right. Thank you, Andy. Any other questions for Andy? And I don't know if Nicole or Colleen wants to go next.
Well, I think basically what we want to talk about, if you are taking at the, taking a look at your list, there are additional things on the list that are possibilities if you, if you are going to spend the additional funding. And one of the things that we want to speak towards as a team, as a leadership team or as a cabinet team, we really would like to talk about the assistant principal position. And partly, we, we, we have been talking about effective schools and having effective leaderships, and we've been discussing the idea of moving our district forward. And within those conversations, we two, we currently have two, obviously administrators that are at the high school level, but we really want to start taking a look at new and innovative things. We want to start making the connections with our secondary colleges and, and making those connections. We want to move into the ninth grade academy. We want to move the one-to-one iPad initiative. We want to look at curriculum and really build that curriculum mapping and to build additional structures within the high school in which we feel that if we had another person, we could move faster. And that we could be more effective and that we could really, really take this district to, to a different level. And we wanted to speak to that as a team because we really feel that it's time to make Fairbowl move. It's time to do things that we haven't done typically from Fairbowl, and in order to do that, if we could have additional help at this level, we could probably make the district move a lot faster. And I'll turn it over to Nicole, because she's going to add to this.
I just wanted to add a few things. When we, we met last week and you had a lot of good conversations about all of the proposals that you had in front of you and that have been, that have been brought to you by all the staff members. The AP position did get discussed from our high school level in detail for you, and they gave you some, some information as far as ratios and class sizes and how we, how we compete with the big nine and so forth. We, we really thought long and hard about this, and we see that the staff support this position, especially someone as credible and, and valued and respected as Larry Gavin coming forward and really supporting this position. It really makes us look at it really hard and long. We have a lot of things that are coming down that are mandated from us, such as the teacher growth and development program that won't, we won't have anyone to, we won't have our coaches in our buildings next year to move that or continue moving that mandate forward. We, we looked at, we also have the bullying mandate that need, that we really need to stay on top of at the high school level, at every level. The high school level has the highest enrollment, so we have, we potentially could have the highest number of issues up there with those older kids. We want to move to being very proactive in the district rather than reactive with issues that are happening within our buildings. We also looked at having three administrators up there in, in our current situation. Our third individual up there as our activities director is not a licensed administrator at this time. It's not a requirement for the individual to be a licensed administrator, and so even if he were to retire tomorrow, we wouldn't replace him with a licensed administrator. So we, we, we really don't have a third individual up there. He was licensed in the past, he is not licensed anymore, hasn't been for a couple of years. Thinking about replacing that person when he does retire, if we were to require an administrative license, it would raise the increase, the salary of that position. But we're really not sure that that would work really well. The individual, that position has taken on a lot over the last few years, such as middle school activities, such as not just athletics, but also activities. The position has also had many different extracurriculars added, such as robotics, such as play, play target shooting. Soccer has been added recently as well. So, so a lot of things have been added to that individual's plate that we just really don't see where there's time in the day to be able to also take on coaching our staff and, and moving our staff forward in a, in the direction where we need to go for our students.
Thank you, Colleen and Nicole. Any questions for Nicole and Nicole before we move into our discussion of where the board is comfortable with the budget? Certainly can bring them back up too as we get to items later. All right, thank you, Colleen and Nicole. All right, and so I, I think the next discussion that the board wanted to have was for us to revisit the idea, and this was even before. There were some more recent, the most recent changes came up for us to, to think about before we get into decisions specifically on what the items would be to add, what the board is comfortable with as a target number for that addition. So I, I think the, the points to clarify were that at the, the previous work session, the board had been discussing a budget which at that moment was showing us an amount of two hundred thousand for the amount of revenue over expenditures. So in essence, an extra two hundred thousand dollars in the budget to think about using for next year. And the board at that time was discussing adding about three hundred thousand dollars from the general fund, I'm sorry, from the fund balance to, to increase that perhaps to, to five hundred thousand. So that's a number we had been discussed on. I don't think it was decided, but we had been sort of actively thinking about that number. The big change since that discussion was that, we've, we've heard from Andy that the projections for the student enrollment is actually about forty students higher than we previously were thinking, which increases that two hundred thousand dollar number from to about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so now it's still up for the board to decide, for instance, as an example, would we want to still add three hundred thousand to that? So that we would have an amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand? Or do we like to stay with an amount of about five hundred thousand, only thinking about fifty thousand coming from the, the general fund? Or anything else in between or anything else we want to do? There are no decisions made, those have just been suggestions out there. So I just wanted to lay that, that foundation, particularly for those who might be listening and have not been a part of those discussions over recent months. So I'll just open the floor to discussion on that and, and we'll see where the board goes. Mr. Wolf?
Andy, can I ask you a question? We, we, in the budget, you forecast three percent wage increase, cost increase.
Right.
What does each one percent or half a percent over that mean in, in total expenditures?
A one percent salary settlement is approximately two hundred and seventy-five thousand. So it's a one percent on the state aid formula and a one percent salary negotiations are pretty close to the same.
Okay. One percent, two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Right.
Thank you.
Other questions and thoughts on, on this item, giving ourselves some direction as we go into the next discussion? The next discussion will be trying to choose which items we will be adding.
Well, I would just support the discussion, or what I've seen is what we've discussed recently, using three hundred thousand from the fund balance going forward in addition to the additional revenue forecast to fund programs. So we'd be looking at a number closer to seven hundred and fifty thousand addition, of additions going forward.
Thank you, Yvette. Other thoughts on that?
Yeah, I'm going to stick with the original half million and just use fifty thousand out of the fund balance. We did all that discussion, four hours, I believe, wasn't it? And then all of a sudden, we're changing midstream here. We took our sort of votes, or whatever you want to call them, then all of a sudden we get thrown into another two hundred and fifty thousand, and just all of a sudden, quick, let's decide.
Okay. Other thoughts?
I'm, I'm comfortable with something between five hundred thousand in this six hundred and thirty thousand dollar number that's on our sheet in green that, that, like Mr. Olson said, stems from that conversation on Monday night, a week ago.
Other thoughts from the board? This is not an action item, so it's not something we will be voting on, but as we go into the next item, we will be voting on items that will add up to some number. And so we'll be making decisions from that.
I guess I would just take the opportunity, Mr. Chair, to, you know, say I think the one percent is conservative, assuming that the proposal at the state right now, I believe, is one point five. That was the agreement without the preschool funding that was proposed. So I found that reassuring that we would have that the one percent that's been estimated is conservative in our budget. And that the negotiations, we, we do have a zero percent increase in our insurance, which in a way assists with our negotiations going forward and what we're looking at as a budget for that. So I would just add those two elements in the discussion.
Mr. Wolf? Chair, I am, I'm very comfortable with, you know, somewhere as Mr. Wolf has indicated, between the five hundred thousand and the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we have here. But I also agree with Mr. Olson that we had a extensive discussion a week ago about focusing in on what we're going to use to expand our programs and offerings for students. I also recognize that these are projections when it comes to student enrollment. I certainly honor what you've done, Angie, as far as looking at our student enrollment. I'm comfortable with that, but I also know the volatility of trying to finalize on a particular enrollment number, which we won't know until students walk in the door. So I'm a little uncomfortable going much beyond even six hundred thousand dollars, even with the new figures that we're, we're receiving with those forty students.
And I would just emphasize something that I tried to emphasize as well during our previous discussion, I'll say here, the nature of the beast at this moment in, in projecting these budgets is that we can expect things to pop up between now and when we have final numbers. And every time they do, it will be on the order of a few hundred thousand dollars, because one percent here and one percent there does that for, for a budget that's as large as this one. So there's nothing too surprising to me that an item came along that did that in one direction, and I think there will be some items that could raise that even more and some items with a large number of retirements we have. Those are not factored into the budget, I think, at this moment. That could raise it some. Settlements could raise it or lower it some. So that is the nature of the beast. And so I, I, I hope the board is okay with understanding that that, that will continue to happen to us with, with the budget as we go forward, to be expected with a budget as, as large as ours. I'll, I'll add my own, on, on top of that then, I'll add my own preferences. I, I guess I, maybe the easiest way for me to say it is that I'm very flexible on this. I, I, I liked the five hundred thousand dollar number that we have been discussing. I thought it was a, a good number. I would, if the board had a sense that it wanted to go this evening and felt like there were seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of, of good expenses, which is using that additional two hundred and fifty, I would also be okay with that. But I understand the reservations about going that high. So from my own perspective, I'm comfortable with numbers all along that range. We are trying to balance being fiscally careful as well as adding to the needs, and so I, I understand both sides of those, and I'm, I'm very comfortable with wherever the board decides to go on those.
Well, I'd like to say that our discussion a week ago highlighted the dedication of our staff in coming up with a number of these proposals, and all the proposals obviously have merit. The fact that our best estimate on enrollment provides us with a little, with some more money this week that we weren't aware of last week is always, you know, as others have said, it's, it's a, it's a evolving process and, and predictions are just that, just predictions. But based on the discussions that we have had, I personally would be comfortable with using somewhere in the neighborhood of half of that two hundred and fifty thousand to bring us addressing the items in green on our, our spreadsheet here, because I believe they all have a strong contribution to our students and they go some distance to dealing with our evolving issues demographically, but they also offer a solid, I'm going to use the word infrastructure to support our teachers and all of our students. So, long story short, I would be comfortable in using some portion of that now two hundred and fifty thousand that we weren't aware of earlier to address the issues that we've had already discussed.
Thank you, Mr. Casper.
The most common numbers I'm hearing range between five hundred and six hundred and thirty thousand. If I'm understanding Yvette correctly, I think she would like us to go higher, and if I'm understanding Mr. Olson correctly, I think he would like us to stay on the lower end of that. So there's some, we're a board of seven people, so I expect some, some difference of opinions on this. Yeah, I'm sure-
Yeah, like I said, five hundred thousand, because we spent four hours determining that. Then all of a sudden, we get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and almost like, let's go back to another four-hour meeting to, to all revote and, I mean, it was an excellent meeting, it was well-run, but it's almost like, here's some extra money, we'll just kind of, you know, throw it at it.
Well, I-
You know, it, it just, yeah, we went through that, I mean, blood and guts for four hours, and all of a sudden, we got the extra money, oh, we'll just, you know, spend it on trips or something, who cares?
I, I would agree with you that we did spend an enormous amount of time at the last meeting. It was a very long meeting.
What trip are we taking?
I, I am not sure that, that we left that meeting with a, with a decision on a number. I think we always had a number in, in our head. So I, I'm not sure I would characterize that number as being settled when we left the meeting. That was not my impression, I know you're speaking for yourself, and so I disagree with the feeling that you left the meeting with, but there was no action taken on, on that item at the meeting. We were using a discussion point, and so I just, just like to characterize it according to the way I, I felt about it.
I'm feeling personally to stay on the more conservative side, and maybe I'm thinking, I need- I need clarification, but at the beginning of this next school year, are we going to have people coming to us asking for additional teachers and paras support? I think we had quite a bit of that this past school year, and the money, I would assume, is coming out of the same place, right? So I just feel like I don't wanna spend all the extra, because we had a lot of requests for additional paras and teachers this past year, and I think we need to consider that that still could happen this next year as well.
I think that's a very good point, Andrea. I would just point out, and this is true this last year, and it would likely be true the next year, that those would usually become because of an increased enrollment, which often means increased revenue at that same moment. So, for instance, the kindergarten at Jefferson-
Sure.
The additional teacher was easily offset by the additional revenue coming in from the unexpected students.
Gotcha.
So that would often be the case, which does not mean that there are not unforeseen things.
Right.
So I don't mean to, but it is something to keep in mind. Absolutely, there are unforeseen things coming up, and we wanna think about those as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Wolf.
Yeah, it was a good point Andrea brought up, is that special ed, they bought almost every session, they gotta hire more special ed pairs or teachers, and I'm a little scared of that, and thank God that Andrea brought it up, that you don't know what's gonna happen with that, and request after request for special ed, which we have to do, we don't have a choice. And so I never thought of that, and it just, hopefully it doesn't happen, but I don't wanna be caught off-guard again. I don't know how much we did hire Mr. Sesker of the special ed, the total, I think we had a figure, I think Jerry asked for that figure, I don't know what it was again, how much we spent additional last year or this year.
It was quite a bit.
Yeah. So maybe we need a cushion because of maybe special ed increasing. Then I think you said there were some changes in special ed that are gonna hit us, right?
Yeah, but I, well, and you, I, yes, there will be.
Yeah.
I don't know how that's gonna impact us. We're projecting that it's not gonna be a negative impact, or if it's gonna be an impact, it's gonna be fairly minimal. I'll talk a little bit about that on my report, but, yeah, there are some things coming down the pipe.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Is this a time when I would ask to talk about the behavior, I guess, the specialist, if some of the leadership did wanna comment on that versus the assistant principal addition? I mean, I know that was one of our priorities, that was kind of in the, it was at the bottom, but people were supportive of it at the meeting last week, and I just, I didn't get an impression if it was still a high priority for the administrative staff or the leadership team.
Well, and I, certainly Nicole and Colleen can speak for themselves, and Emery and Andy, but it's not a very high priority on my list.
I'm sorry, we can't, where?
The, it's the, the special ed behavioral specialist, I think they're asking for it at the middle school. I think Evette was asking where that was for our priorities, is that correct?
Right, 'cause we considered it, it was at the bottom of our list, but still, if I'm not, if I'm not speaking correctly here, that we, it was a possible addition, it was still on our list, wasn't high importance, but is it still, is it more important than an assistant principal at the senior high, or, it got more votes at the time when it was brought forward?
Right, I'm just relaying our, I guess, again, I don't wanna represent them, but that would not be very high on the priority list for us as a cabinet team.
So, if I may, we looked at this position as well, and we feel like this coming up year, with the addition of a one-point-no director back, we feel like that will be a really good add to our district and give us a lot more time with our staff that we need. This EBD, or, excuse me, this special ed behavior position was, the focus was to work with our EBD teachers district-wide to help give them some support and some ideas on interventions, and really how well to work with these kids to get to some behavior issues that are special ed-related, because the EdSys grant behavior positions are focusing on non-special ed kids. So this was more of a special ed, direct special ed proposal. However, looking at it now, we feel like we can really make good progress having our director back full-time, because we feel like he'll be able to work with our staff a lot more than what our current situation has allowed.
Todd, can I ask you a question on the service learning coordinator? Can a current staff member or teacher fill that position at an equivalent of a sixty thousand dollar FTE, or does that need to remain at the hundred thousand dollar level? Because that's administration or?
Yeah, it would, it would be probably somewhere between there. It would be, because it'd be based on the seniority list, there's no license required, it would probably be closer to seventy-five thousand. And by the way, I have had some staff that are interested in pursuing that, so.
Thank you.
I wanna point out that with that position, we have to look at the comp worth for that position. So that is actually, that salary is actually based on the points that are driven from a human resources standpoint. So it doesn't look right now like it would be part of the teacher contract. It does look like it's, you look at what the duties are of that position, and that actually drives the salary. So it looks like it's a base of seventy to seventy-five, and then additional benefits on top of that.
And I like the debate that Andy has promoted with her superintendent. I know that offset, we have some ideas with community ed, I'm sorry, Andy, didn't mean to put you on the spot.
It's okay.
But I think we can offset some of that hundred and ten thousand dollars, probably with some funding from community ed, too.
That's right. We have talked about using some community ed funds to help support that position, whether it's, you know, use of community ed funds to help do more outreach in the community and have some budget supplies, just different resources for the position.
Mr. Chair, the forty new students that you're projecting, Andy?
Mm-hmm.
Where are they, where are they in the district? Where are we anticipating this, these forty students being placed?
It's not actually kids, it's just extra time outside of the regular school day. So afternoon activities, if they stay for ALC after school, that generates additional ADM, additional membership. And then also, if they attend during the summer, for example, I know that there's something, I'm not super familiar, but there's something if they take band, maybe, then they can't take a different class, so that's what drives it.
All right, so it's not new bodies in the district?
No.
It's just reallocation of where they're gonna be spending their time?
Right, yep, so it's that over and above, and that's why I overlooked it, I didn't think about, I was just thinking bodies in the classrooms.
Okay, so then, the next question I wanna ask is, what does our class size look like in the elementary?
Good question. And then with the-
Kindergarten through fifth grade.
Yeah. Brad, you wanna answer that? And Jennifer, if you have that data? I don't have that with me right now, but projections?
Let me just clarify why I'm asking that question, is that if we have some anomalies in our district where our class sizes are really out of proportion, that's gonna be a higher priority for me than most anything else on this list.
Well, right now, and maybe you can address to this year, 'cause then next year, we'll address the kindergarten and what we have, projections, but Brad and Jennifer, what are your class ratios now? Can you break it down, estimate K-two, and then three, four, or five, about?
Twenty-two. Four, five, and twenty-four.
Okay, so they're all under twenty-five, generally speaking? Does that make sense? And then next year, I think we looked at Jennifer's, at Lincoln, sorry, and at that building, we've got it right now, or at Jefferson, we have that frozen at eighty, eighty-eight for four sections of kindergarten, so that's twenty-two. And then Lincoln, right now, is at fifty or sixty?
Fifty-one confirmed, but there's twenty-six that were continued to be in the numbers for, for the little ones.
So that would break it down to less than twenty, and then same thing in Roosevelt.
Is there any overflow or?
Correct, yep. So low ratios, assuming that we keep four kindergarten teachers at each elementary building, right now anyways, twenty-two or less.
And in the upper grades, fourth, fifth?
Twenty-four.
Across the district.
There was nodding of heads for those who didn't.
I'm trying to figure out if there was outlier, sometimes you get outlier like at Roosevelt where they're twenty-seven, twenty-eight, but I don't think there is, I think it's pretty, like that.
Would the newcomer center reduce those numbers? That'd be another, you know, piece that is a part of the-
Sorry, we can't hear you, I can't-
I'm sorry, the newcomer center would also help reduce some of those class sizes as we put them-
Temporarily, not permanently.
It depends on where they are, depending on how long they're in that program, right?
Are we attempting to even out the class sizes in the elementary, like we've talked about?
Yep, for kindergarten, yep, until we look at the border.
Well, what about the other grades?
Well, the other grades are registered in the current schools, so we're not, we're not telling parents to move their kids out of one school to the other unless they are asking.
But is there, like Jefferson, is there higher numbers at Jefferson than the other two schools?
The only thing at Jefferson right now is they have five sections of first grade next year, based on the numbers that they had last year. Otherwise, everybody else has four sections in each of the different buildings.
And as a reminder, we've asked Todd to look into a long-term solution for that. So during the course of this year, we'll have discussions about whether or not we wanna move board orders to try and do some evening, whatever techniques we wanna use to try and even out the class sizes across the district.
In my professional opinion, I say the class sizes at Faribault Public Schools are very reasonable compared to other big night schools.
What we worry about is Faribault.
Right, that's why I said Faribault Schools are very reasonable class sizes.
Todd, does any of this whatsoever, bless you, does any of this whatsoever have any effect on FIAED four days a week in the elementary school?
Well, we're working on that. The conflict that I understand with Colleen, after having a visit with her, is we're trying to get the common planning time for staff, and right now, the schedule's in conflict with common planning times, so we're trying to figure out what makes a more of an impact on kids. Is it common planning time, or should they be taking FIAED four days a week? So we're trying to weigh that whole thing. Colleen has some other ideas to, not just do FIAED, but to get kids up and moving and do physical activities in organized fashion, so we're looking into that. But some of the school, two of the elementary schools I know are fitting in, I think, two days a week FIAED. I think at Jefferson, are we doing four days a week FIAED?
We are looking at, we're in the process right now, this year, we have FIAED two days a week. We're looking at a couple different schedules for next year, the staff will be voting on that on Wednesday evening at our staff meeting. But one of the things I wanna talk about, too, is the common planning time is huge, but on top of that, with kids, when you have a half-hour specialist here and there throughout the day, transitions are very difficult sometimes for these kids, too. So we're kind of looking at that, too, and what's best for the kids, and how can we make the day flow very evenly for the kids so that we can get the best educational system for them to create the most success for them.
Todd, when we worked on this levy, that was one of the things you and I discussed, is having FIAED four days a week. I have two kids in an elementary school right now, and they are adamant that FIAED four days a week is much better than two days a week.
In fact, we're looking at the possibility, we're talking about a possibility, we kind of threw out an idea, kind of out of the box, of having the ability to have activities right away before school for all kids, five days a week. But that's something that takes planning and some thought, so we're just starting down the process. We know that Farmington has the, had to have the ability to do that in some other districts, so we wanted to look at the idea of doing it in the morning, five days a week. So it's just a thought, we don't know if it will work, but it's just the beginning that we've started to discuss.
And by the way, since this discussion, it could mean that it could be another proposal for staffing coming up, and I know we have this staffing, but as Jason said, in a dynamic environment such as education, different proposals will come up in the future. So we're hoping we can figure that out. But I sent the email out to all the elementary principals this morning, saying we would really, really like four days a week.
And you folks are all the experts in it. I'll just throw on there, those kids are our number-one customer, and we do what's best for our number-one customer, plain and simple, as does any business that wants to be around for any length of period of time. So I would really weigh that pretty heavily on what's best for the customer, which is the students.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, Mr. Chair.
And I know this is some new discussion that we didn't have at the four-hour session last week, but I think it does play out into how much we think we wanna allocate for any new programs at this time, when instead, when we really should be considering some potential ramifications down the road. And what I'd like to ask is, Jennifer, at Jefferson, if you had smaller class sizes, would that address some of the behavioral issues that you may be facing? And Brad, you could answer the same question at Jefferson. If your class sizes were, say, at the upper elementaries, twenty-one, do you think that would address some of the behavioral issues?
Chair, I'd say that two years ago, when we were at twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two sometimes in fourth and fifth grades, that was problematic. And currently, I think that twenty-four is a pretty manageable number in the second, third, fourth, fifth grade classes. Certainly, if it sticks around eighteen to twenty-two in kindergarten, that's manageable. We're trying to address some of the other ESL issues with pushing, greater collaboration, and that fits into why the common planning time is so important when you, when you adjust that schedule, it can have an impact. We also, Chad, I can let you know that if you walk by a classroom, you'll see teachers that do brain activities, right, as part of their normal classroom activities, so the kids aren't stagnant, they're up, moving and grooving. I've got Sandy Kane, I walked by her room, I just, I'm so impressed, she's, her final year, she's retiring, and she's using a Go-Noodle thing she picked up from some of the younger teachers, and the kids love it. It's a brain-rich activity, and it's not FIAED, but the kids love it. So, and I think part of some of the proposals, using the responsive classroom techniques that we have, and part of our Jefferson proposal, Lincoln, Roosevelt, is using some of those activities and getting on the front end of some of the behavioral issues, having places for kids to go, not necessarily a social worker, but a place that they can go get things straight, that they need straight at that time, and then get back to class.
I would say currently this year, my third, fourth, and fifth grade class sizes are very well under, they're between twenty and twenty-two. So we've, we were fortunate this year to have that ratio, and, but I would also like to speak with Brad with scheduling proposals, and one of the things that we've committed to also, if, depending on what staff chooses to do, is if we go to the common prep, common planning time, is how do we supplement in the classroom and get those kids up and get those kids active, along with Colleen talked about, with hour in the morning? I also come from a district where we had a FIAED teacher who worked in having an extra section, so that kids could get it three to four times a week, and so that's something I'm currently looking into. And all of these types of things will be on the back of that proposal, having a jam and minute, where every day, before the day starts, they take a minute and they do activities to get the brain going and to get some active movement going in their bodies, and they can do that throughout the day. So we are, it is very important to us to keep kids active, because research will show the more active they are, the more that they give themselves those brain breaks, the better at learning they are. They're ready to sit down, they're ready to learn, and they're much more successful.
So our discussion went to the side a little bit, but that's appropriate, and that's okay. But to bring us back for the moment, I wanna make sure, before we move into looking at the actual items, that I characterize what I'm hearing from the board appropriately, because what I think I'm hearing from the board is that the number of five hundred thousand is a low end, that's where everybody, I think, feels comfortable. That's where everybody, I think, feels comfortable, if I'm hearing that correctly. And then, we have various levels of comfort from different board members as we proceed up there, either to 630 or to 750, different levels of numbers. And that probably is all we need from this discussion before we move into choosing items. Is that a fair characterization? Anybody want to add to that? Because I think next, then, I would like to go ahead and move into those items, unless somebody wants to add more to that part of that conversation. I need to locate my agenda again. And so, that brings us, then, to item 10F, consider approval of programs. So, these are the programs we have been discussing for a number of months now. The board has seen many presentations on all of these items. And so, tonight's the night that we would like to receive board approval for which items we would like to move forward with. I think to get started, and I'm going to try and characterize what I think I heard from the board and suggest a path forward, and then I'd like to hear from the board if that's an appropriate path, a way to move through this or not. Because we certainly don't need to do this, I just simply want to make a suggestion. So, we have a number of items, and I'm going to read those off. These were the items that, at the end of our board discussion, were at the top of our list. Those were the ATSS program, a grant program, which would cost $250,000 from the district and would be matched by a grant program. That would go to support a number of programs at the elementary schools at Roosevelt, Jefferson, and Lincoln. We had a proposal for a 1.0 service learning coordinator. We had a clay target proposal to pay for coaches that are currently running the clay target program in our district. We have a program, a proposal for robotics program to continue funding, to put in place permanent funding for the robotics program in the district. We had a proposal for a Unity program, an extracurricular program, to celebrate the diversity within our district. We had an interventionist proposal from Lincoln Elementary and from Jefferson and from Roosevelt. And we had a special ed behaviorist specialist proposal. Those were the items that the board decided at our last meeting, at the end of that meeting, were our top priorities. My suggestion is that we look at that, that we proceed in this fashion. If I'm reading the board correctly, the board is supportive of this entire list at different levels, and the two items that I don't think raised, came to the same level as the items, other items, were the service learning coordinator or the special ed behavior specialist. Those two items, if we look at this list without those two items, they add up to something I just did, the calculations, 479,000 is what I got. So, my suggestion for moving forward, if the board feels this is appropriate, and please tell me it's not, if you don't feel this way, that we act on those items as a group, because I think there would probably be universal support for those items, and then approach the items outside of that group individually and see, and then take individual votes on those items and see from there. That is perhaps not the way we want to go. Maybe we'll have a discussion, decide on that list. And so, if the board is not comfortable with that as an approach, it's only a suggestion, please let me know, and we'll decide what we want to do.
My only question with that, and I'm totally fine with that, is if last week I thought you maybe wanted to, oh, no, you want to vote for robotics?
Well, we can take robotics out of that group. So, yeah, we can, at the last second, we can treat it all as a group, but with robotics separate. But in principle, that as a group with a separate motion to help me out with that. Is that characterized what the board was feeling? Is that an okay action to move forward? Speed us along, but we don't need to move into new expenditures quickly. So, if that does not feel appropriate, let's not do it.
Just a question, Mr. Chair. So, what you're saying is we would take this as a group or vote on it individually?
So, we would vote on, as a group, all of the items on this list with two exceptions.
Yep, all three.
Well, the third exception is a little different. Sorry, it's confusing. Two exceptions, the service learning coordinator and the special ed behavior specialist. And then, the robotics has a separate issue.
So, we remove those?
Remove those from that list, and then act on them as a group with two motions, one for robotics and one for the rest. Does that feel appropriate? And then, we can come back to the other items and decide whether or not the board would like to act on other items as well. Okay?
Don't move.
All right, we have a motion.
Could you restate and define in detail, please?
So, let me suggest the motion that I think Yvette was making. Yvette was moving to approve the programs of ATSS in the amount of 250,000, the clay target coaches in the amount of 7,000, the robotics program, actually, would you mind if I left that one out? She was not moving that one. The Unity program in the amount of 3,000, the Lincoln Academic Interventionists in the amount of 94,000, the Jefferson proposal in the amount of 34,000, and the Roosevelt proposal in the amount of 74,000. The motion was for all of those items in one motion. Would there be a second for that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that item? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. And then, the next item that I put up that I felt the board had a feeling to want to approve was robotics, but we'll do separately so that I can abstain. I would entertain a motion to approve at this time.
So, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the robotics program. Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Oh.
So, I can record my objection.
Okay, over here. Robotics. Tom?
Aye.
Jason?
Abstained.
Okay. Yvette?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Jerry?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Six, zero with one abstention.
Thank you all for indulging me on that. All right. Okay. And so, that is the amount of 479,000. There was different degrees of support for going above that. So, at this time, then, I think we should open up the discussion to other items. The ones that I have heard discussed so far in this meeting are the service learning coordinator, and whether or not we would like to approve that, special ed behavior, special ed behavioral specialist, we have had discussion on. And then, we've heard from our administrators that they would like us to consider the high school assistant principal as well. And so, I think, in particular, those three items should be discussed by the board, and we should make decisions on, as a board, on whether or not we would like to approve those.
I would make a motion that we approve the service learning coordinator.
So, we have a motion to approve the service learning coordinator. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the service learning coordinator?
I'll just get an aye.
Okay. Is there a discussion on this item?
I would just add, it was important in the levy discussion, and if we have the funds to go forward, I think the businesses and the chamber involvement in the levy looked at this addition favorably, and I would move, that's why I made the motion.
All right. Thank you, Yvette.
I'd like to say that the inclusion of that in the levy, I think, was a factor for a number of people's support, including my own. I think it has the potential to, if we are able to open up our secondary schedule, particularly the high school, to provide our students with a, an enriched high school experience if more and more can take part in it. I think, you know, having some sort of scheduling adjustment, which is an issue that's been around for a long time, but without a coordinator, I don't see very much happening. So, I would favor including the coordinator at this time.
I will also add that hopefully this person, should we approve it, can help with the many groups that have expressed an interest in helping or partnering with the schools in many ways. And obviously, it takes two to make the partnership work and whatnot, but I think this is an added piece to that because everybody's plate at the district office is now full, and this is an important piece, I think, helping our schools further connect with our community.
Yeah, I would just echo what you just said, Chad. I've heard from, had a number of conversations with community members, local businesses, who would love to participate and host our students and get involved with us. And the challenge for that is often, who's the point person, who should be in charge of that? And it's very difficult when it's not somebody's job to do that, and I think it's important enough. It's a good thing to have be somebody's job, and that can really help the program, not just be an aphrodisiac for somebody, but really be the focus of what they do. And so, I agree completely with the comments that have been made. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to add a service learning coordinator. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
No.
Could we please do a roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. Tom?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Yvette?
Aye.
Myself, no. Jerry?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, it passes six, one.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so, we have now added the service learning coordinator to that. This would bring the amount of additions to, I think the number would be 579,5.
I would make a motion to add assistant principal position at the high school.
Okay, we have a motion to add the assistant principal at the high school. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? Motion fails for lack of a second. Thank you, Yvette. Any further motions or discussion on behalf of the board? Okay, well, thank you all very much. I think, then, we will move along to item 10G.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes?
Are we going to do anything with that special ed position that was also taken off?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to move on before we, I thought I was waiting for a discussion on that. So, nope, nope. If, we'll be explicit about it. Thank you for bringing it up. So, the only item that we have not discussed or brought forward for explicit discussion is the special ed behavioral specialist. It's hard for me to say for some reason. Any thoughts or comments on that, or would anybody like to make a motion to approve?
Where's this person going to be stationed? It'd be...
It's clean here. Do you know where this person would be stationed? If it's, we talked to middle school, but I'm not sure if the principals even know. Do you have any idea? We don't know.
We don't know.
Just a question, does our new director of special ed know that this is going to be part of his job description?
If this is added?
If this is added to his expectation?
Probably not.
I mean, I heard that discussion, and that's why there wasn't a lot of support from the leadership team for that, is that the new director of special ed could assume, because he will be full-time, that that could be part of his opportunity to work more with staff.
Yes, I would hope that would be part of his job, yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on that item? Would anybody like to make a motion on that item before I move on? All right. And thank you, Jerry, for asking me to be explicit about that. Are there any other items before we move on, any other programs that anybody would like to discuss? There were some other proposals for custodians and media specialists, if anybody would like to discuss those before we move on. Okay, we will move along, then, to item 10G, consider the approval of one-time general fund expenditures. Okay. So, at the last board meeting, it was also discussed that there are a number of places for the purchase of some capital investments for equipment. That would be long-term investments and one-time expenses. A proposal was put in front of us to perhaps use what at the time was $880,000 of revenue over expenditures from this year for that purpose. And the items that were suggested were to fund the auto proposal for equipment in the amount of $85,000, a bandaid proposal to fund the equipment for the next two years, the purchase of equipment in the amount of $384,000, and then to use the balance of that 880 to replenish the OPEB funds, the retirement benefits fund for our teachers. That was put in front of us for discussion. Is there, before we have any motions, I'll ask for any discussion or comments on those items.
I'll leave auto. What is needed, he set a figure for safety on lifts, just so they still become certified or stay certified.
Right.
What was that figure? I mean, it wasn't the 85.
No, there's a figure that was...
That just really, so that they don't lose their certification. What was that? I, for some reason, 30,000 sticks in my head.
Yeah, it was in, it was in the finance...
I think it was about 30,000, and then they received a grant for about 7,000, which in the first year took them down to about 23,000, 22,000, 23,000 for the first year.
Yeah. That's what they absolutely need to keep their program safe and certified. Is that what you're...
Well, and I don't even think, in all honesty, that you need the full 23,000 to meet the OSHA requirements. The lifts are not, are no longer fall under that OSHA certification, is my understanding. I don't believe that's quite the full 23,000, but I do believe it is the majority of them.
Just looking at phase one, it was, yeah, it was, they took, we took 6,600 off because that had already been purchased, so it ended up being about $23,000. So, bulk oil storage is 2,400, installation of bulk oil storage is $400, the Bosch general toolkits for MLR carts, the 3198, and then the Challenger car lifts, two of those would be 16,458.
So, that adds up to?
23, about 23,000.
How much, 20?
About 23,000.
23,000.
Yep, for that first year.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, can I make a motion?
You certainly can.
I make a motion that on automotive, that we spend that 23,000 dollars.
We have a motion to support the automotive program in the amount of 23,000. Is there a second for that motion? Is there a second for that motion? So, motion fails for lack of a second.
Are we going to have a discussion about breaking these items out separately, or do we have them as a whole?
I think...
Or are you going to do suggestions?
Yeah, I'm open to suggestions on this one. I don't, I don't, it was not clear to me if the board had a, I didn't have a sense of the board whether or not there was universal agreement on all three of these items or any fashion, so I don't. I think I would rather simply act on motions that people make in the course of our discussions because I'm not sure I had a perfect feel for the, the feeling of the board on each of these items. Although, perhaps, maybe the way to do this, just to be, move quickly through it, is simply to, I do have... to, I do have a sense that there was a support for the full automotive program, so perhaps we could start by simply discussing that and see if there's a motion to approve the automotive program in the full amount of eighty-five thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars.
I would make that motion, Mr. Chair. I can list some information from the finance committee that if that's...
Okay, well, we have, let's start with the motion. So we have a motion to approve that. Is there a second to that motion?
What was the motion again, sir?
So the motion was to approve support of the automotive program for all, for the full three-year improvement proposal in the amount of eighty-five thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars. That was, you have a motion and a second to approve that. And then, Yvette, if you would like to...
I don't know if it's relevant or people are interested. Phase one was what Todd originally described. Phase two would be an alignment machine and a wheel balancer. Phase three is an alignment rack. I'm saying these like I know what these are. A brake fluid exchanger, a coolant exchanger, a transmission fluid exchanger, a battery charger, a three-ton floor jack.
All guys understand.
So those are the items as listed for the three-year plan that total would be eighty-six or eighty-five, I'm sorry.
There's others of us on the board who don't understand.
Okay. Just to give you the gist of it, that is what was presented.
All right.
I would just like to say that I've had conversations with community members and Mr. Lessman over the last number of years, and he's made a convincing case to me about the items that have been described in his proposal. So I am comfortable with the proposal as proposed.
Please, Ms. Wolf.
Yeah, I was, when I made that twenty-three, I thought, that's the only thing the board would, I didn't think they'd go with the full eighty-five, or I would've made it for the full eighty-five thousand. So I thought, okay, just what has to be done to keep it whatever, but yeah, I should've made the most original for eighty-five thousand, whatever. So got caught in that one.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, I was just...
Ms. Wolf?
I will just add, I think this is an important step in sending a good message to finding Mr. Lessman's replacement at some point when he decides to retire and go into the private sector. I think this sends a strong message.
I think that's an outstanding point.
Yep.
All right. Any further discussion on this item? All right, we have a motion and a second to support the automotive program in the amount of eighty-five thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, so that was one of the items. And then next up was the band proposal. So the band directors have given us a proposal for replacement of instruments, many of which are now, if I understand correctly, on the order of thirty and forty years old, to begin replacing those over the course of a number of years. And so the number of three hundred and eighty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-five was enough to do that for the first couple of years, being some of the bigger commitments in the early years. Mr. Robichaud?
Mr. Chair, I would introduce a motion to approve the band proposal for the sixteen, seventeen school years of three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars for instrument replacement.
All right, we have a motion to approve the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen proposals for the band equipment in the amount of three hundred and eighty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, Mr. Kasper gets it.
The tiebreaker.
We always let Kathy decide who gets it. Don't steal that job, Chad.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the band proposal in the amount of three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Any further discussion?
I'd like just to add, you know, Mr. Wolf mentioned that signaling Mr. Lessman's replacements, that we are in favor of an outstanding program that's been historically excellent. I think this is also a signal to future community members, parents, and students that we recognize the value of music, and to the extent that the band program represents that, I like, I like this motion. I think it's a wise investment and will serve the community well.
Thank you, Ms. Kasper. Other comments? Questions?
We can look at local resources for any spending, that's a plus as well. I'll just throw that in there.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. We do have a motion and a few seconds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. The last item that was on here was to put an amount into the OPEB fund, so this would take money from our general fund and put it into a fund that we have been tasked by the state to build in order to fund the retirement benefits for our retiring teachers. That amount, the amount currently, Todd, perhaps you can remind us, the amount currently in the OPEB fund is, maybe we'll ask Andy.
Yeah, that's a better question.
What's currently in the OPEB fund?
Is one million nine hundred and fifty-one thousand.
And we are asked to have it at what amount?
Eight million. Should I have eight million right now?
So we're only about a quarter of the way to funding that fully.
Domination.
And, and so over the, over the last, excuse me, half a dozen years or so, we have been contributing to that fund in years when extra revenue comes in. And so a proposal was in front of us for four hundred thousand. That number could be determined by the board at any level. It decided was appropriate.
What did we, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, you were for services.
What did we borrow from the fund?
We, we took five hundred and forty-nine thousand out a couple of years ago as part of the budget adjustments.
That was my question.
So it was at two point five million.
Right, and that has not been replaced, is that correct?
Correct.
Can I make a motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
That we replace half of that figure.
Okay, so that was five twenty-nine, is that right?
Five forty-nine.
Five forty-nine. Okay.
Two seventy-five.
So, can I round that up to two seventy-five? Is that okay?
Yes, yeah.
It's two seventy-four, five, but we'll just say two seventy-five, if that's okay with you. So we have a motion to place two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars into the OPEB fund balance. Is there a second for that motion? Is there a second for that motion? So motion fails for lack of a second?
I believe the finance committee was recommending five hundred thousand dollars. They had discussions about this recently. Richard?
Go ahead.
I think the finance committee was looking at five hundred thousand dollar contribution when they talked about it recently, but...
Now, we put in, we can take it back out, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. We did take it back. We took it out in the past, so, so there is no question that putting it in the OPEB, I think it's good to have it in there and be nice to build that to a place. And putting in there is not necessarily a permanent, there are hoops to jump through when you want to take it out, but it can be removed in the case that the district would need it in a financial situation.
But just to clarify between Andy and Todd, the real purpose of this, once you get it built up, is you do save the district approximately half a million dollars, five hundred thousand dollars per year in benefits.
That's correct.
Correct.
Just saw the newspaper. Richard, do you want to make another motion?
Not really.
I would, the chair would suggest a motion of five hundred thousand dollars, as recommended by, as discussed at a finance meeting, I am told, for a motion, if such a motion wanted to be made.
Not me. I'm gone.
I'll move that we move five hundred thousand dollars into the OPEB fund.
We have a motion to put five hundred thousand dollars into the OPEB fund from the general fund. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that item?
Should we have a vote on this matter?
Just in case it's a resolution, I don't know if you need a resolution or not, but...
We will need a resolution, so I don't, do we have to have formal paperwork here to do that? Will that have to come in June? Yeah, so you'll see a resolution for this in June.
So you're just voting on the amount now, then in June we'll come up with a resolution to put the money into.
I have a question.
Yes.
If, if the amount were to be five hundred thousand, where would the other eighty-nine thousand, or eighty-seven thousand roughly, come from, since at least the excess revenue figure was eight, eighty-two, four eighty-six?
Right, the document that you have in board book is actually incorrect. The, if you remember with the presentation that I showed earlier, we're looking to increase our fund balance by one point one million, or almost one point two this year. So actually, that's an increase of three hundred and eleven thousand from what was previously presented. So if we do the eighty-five thousand for the automotive, and then the band proposal of three eighty-four, that would leave, and then five hundred thousand dollars, that would leave about two twenty-five that we're gonna increase our fund balance.
So it would not impact the budget, the fund balance?
No, this, no, we'll still be increasing our fund balance this year.
Thank you.
Just a, just point of clarification, we'll be decreasing it a little bit net-wise because the one point six we'll be pulling out, and then the difference will be a little bit greater.
All right. Further questions? Discussion on this item? We do have a motion and a second to transfer five hundred thousand dollars into the OPEB fund from our general unrestricted fund. I think I'm saying all those words correctly, Andy, is that, okay? Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, thank you all very much. The many months of discussion made the last two items, I think, next week, tonight, so I appreciate all the, tonight only represents a small fraction of the effort that went into deciding on those, and I feel privileged to have been a part of those discussions over the last month. I thought we had a lot of open and honest and transparent discussions, and I appreciate that from the entire board. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I would just like to personally thank you for your leadership through this process, which could've been very convoluted, but I think that you took it and took it down, brought it into a very understandable, and I know that sometimes you wonder if it was understandable, but I want to thank you for taking us through this process. But again, like I said, it could've been very convoluted and very difficult, but came to a very, very positive resolution for students in this district. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jerry. Yes.
I will also add a thank you, and a big thank you to our community for passing levy. If that levy did not pass, many, many of these ads would not happen, probably all of these ads would not happen. And for the staff, for all your hard work on these new ideas, these new programs. Hopefully, this is a game changer. This is definitely something different at the elementary level, so thank you for bringing that forward, and thank you to all staff. And thank you to all the board members for all your hard work and putting up with all the questions in four-hour meetings.
All right. Okay, and this thing brings us to item ten H. And ten H and I are similar in their nature, Todd, so maybe we'll act on them separately, of course, but Todd, perhaps if you want to tell us a little bit about the reasons behind items ten H and I, which place staff on non-renewal of their contract, if you want to discuss why, why that is in these cases.
Sure, and if I get stuck, I'll probably have Nicole come up here. But basically, we have staff that are on a variance, they're licensed, but they're on a variance this year. And state law dictates that we lay these folks off, open up those positions to see if there's anybody who is licensed, with a regular license. If we can't find anybody after July first, then we, if we want to, we go back and we ask these people to come back, and then we get another variance. And they have a limit of three years for that variance license. The assumption is that if these folks are in these positions, that they're going back to school to get their license, and eventually, after three years, that'll be enough time for them to actually be fully licensed.
All right. Any questions on the nature of these items? And items H and I are, are similar in that regard, they're different in that this, they're for different types of staff positions. So given that, I will entertain a motion to approve resolution fifteen oh six, placing a probationary coordinator on non-renewal status for 2015, 2016.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that item? All right. Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Tom?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Yvette?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Jerry?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, it passes seven zero.
All right, thank you very much. And then I will move on to item ten I, and entertain a motion to approve resolution fifteen oh seven, placing probationary staff on non-renewal status for 2015, 2016.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Tom?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Yvette?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Jerry?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, it passes seven zero.
All right, thank you all very much. And that brings us to either item eleven, either items of information, starting with our esteemed student representative in what I think is her final, is this true?
Yes, this is.
Your final report to the board.
All right.
Assuming she graduates.
Yeah. It does have to be approved. We've discussed this.
All right, so my name's Emily Remy. I am student representative. There's twelve days left of school, so everything is kind of starting to wind down. Now is our levy, am I really, I don't know. Anyway, it's starting to wind down. Tomorrow, the seniors are nominating the senior Hall of Fame awards, so like, most school spirit, and like, best hair and eyes, things like that, most photogenic. A few of the sports teams, most of the sports teams, I think, are having their conference meets this week. Girls and boys golf had theirs today. That is where Hannah is actually. Hannah Vokelmann will be serving as the next student representative, and she's at golf right now in East... Senior awards night is next Wednesday. Yay, and we have our first senior practice next week, so it's kind of winding down for all the seniors. Is there, do you guys have any questions before I, no questions, all right. So, well, like, like you said, this is my last meeting. I think now is a good time to kind of step back as the last meeting before I do graduate, and I'm no longer a student of federal public schools. I just wanted to thank everyone for allowing me to have this amazing opportunity. Last year after working with Mr. Sisker with the levy stuff, he asked me and another student to service student representatives, and I'm really, really glad that I decided to come and hang out with you, because it's been a lot of fun. So like I said, as well as having tons of fun with you guys and hanging out with you a few times a month, I really learned a lot about like, real-world concepts. I don't know why, just because in school, you know, you learn theories, but this is real-world. So I think, I thought it was a really, really good experience for me to kind of like, get out and kind of see like, what happens in an adult group of people. And I, like, really had a lot of fun, I want to emphasize that, so much fun. And then I also think in the future, I would really like to maybe come back and serve as school member, or wherever I end up living. So again, I wish everyone the best, and thank you for that.
Well, Emily, I know I speak for the board, and I'll let them add their two cents of that, because I'm guessing they will. It has been an absolute privilege for the last couple of years to have you as their student representative. We have on a number of occasions put you in tough spots and asked you to speak on behalf of the students, and you have always been willing to do so, and you have spoken up at times to give us your perspective, and you've always done so respectfully and thoughtfully and with good cheer. And it was greatly appreciated by myself, and I'm sure the rest of the board, and I'll let them speak on their own if they would like to.
Emily, I'd like to thank you for your participation, and I'd like to say to the community, if you have any doubts at all about the quality of young people, and unfortunately, they get, people get bad publicity, or the news focuses on some of the not-so-nice stuff. Ms. Remy is an absolute model representative of the students... stuff, Ms. Remy is an absolute model representative of the students that I've gotten to know over the last forty years here in Faribault, and I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd just add, you've added a great dynamic to our board, it would be very boring at times without you, so it's been much appreciated, and you have a great future, and thank you very much.
I just, first time I've ever heard of a board meeting referred to as a hangout.
Okay, we got a hangout meeting, this is a hangout now.
But I was in, I was in last week though, when you guys had your four-hour meeting, maybe that wasn't...
Well, this must be getting close, I mean, you have a...
I would just like to thank you, and I know you're involved in a ton of stuff with the students, the young students. My kids see you, they know you by name, you know them by name. Remember in life, very little will be given to you, most will be earned. The amount of scholarships you've gotten, they weren't given to you, they were earned. Nothing would be better than you graduate and you bring your skills and talents back here in Faribault. We need more young people that are willing and, and ready to come back and help make a difference, so thank you.
Thanks to you guys.
And I'll just thank Emily too. I've known Emily, she's the first person I met in Faribault, and she was the one that took me on a tour as I went through my interviews with you guys, and was very impressed, her and Nama were, Nama and, and up at the high school, there were a couple of folks, but both Emily and Nama did a great job, and I'll miss you and enjoy seeing you in all your activities and the plays and everything else that you're a part of, and it was nice to have you here at the board meeting to lend your expertise too, so thanks, Emily.
Okay, much less interesting. We'll move on to other items of information from school board members.
I, I would just like to add, for the staff that's here that has not seen the Athletic Mural, for the school board members, if you have not seen it in the hallway outside Norman Gym, it was on here that the school, or excuse me, the Booster Club donated approximately thirty-four thousand dollars. I want to thank Mr. Hubert sitting back there, he's very key cog in what the Booster Club does. I want to thank Mr. Hildebrandt for allowing us and being pretty easy to work with on some of these things, and I want to thank Mr. Sesker for his encouragement on continuing to do things of this nature. That Athletic Mural has over seven-hundred pictures, all the pictures came out of the yearbooks. There's over five thousand faces on that wall, or those walls, excuse me, and there's two world record holders from Faribault, both in track and field. I can assure you that it is a talking point among many in the community and many more that visit our school because their school does not have something like that. So once again, I will thank our community for the generous donations they give, I will thank our Booster Club Board of Eleven for all their time and effort. We had a two-hour meeting last night. We, we provided a few numbers two months ago, and since two thousand and twelve, we are approaching nine-hundred thousand dollars donated to our school district that have come from many in this community, many far and away, anywhere from New York to California to New York and, and a rather large donor in Ohio. As we approach nine-hundred thousand, we are looking at some new ideas for next year which include, not a done deal yet, but we're looking at some improved drinking fountains for, for the, for people with bottle fillers and whatnot, and then we're working with the Faribault Transportation to wrap a bus, excuse me, not a bus, a bus trailer that would be all done in graphics similar to Bruce Smith, the press box on the Bruce Smith Field. So anytime, whether it be our, our band or our football team or our baseball team, softball team, hockey team, and whoever else uses that trailer, they would know that the, the pride of the Faribault Falcons are coming to kick some tail, so anyways, I just wanted to give a shout out and a big thanks to all the people that make that stuff happen.
Thank you, John. Other items from the school board members? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Superintendent.
Here we go. Thank you, I've been at a few meetings, Big Nine Conference meeting was good, Lyle and Ken also attended that down in Austin. We've had a meeting with Austin, Albert Lee, Ootan, Northfield, and Faribault to talk about a special education co-op, coming full circle, Jerry, so we'll be talking about that pretty extensively at our next work session, we've got it on the agenda and we'll, we'll have you, give you a presentation of what that is all about. And of course, I was at the robotics state tournament, I saw Jason, congratulations to the robotics team on that, that was terrific, very fun, and very, is a learning experience for me. I understood robotics and how that competition works a little bit better, so I appreciate that. I do want to also read a couple of items here that I jotted down as these last few months have progressed with you guys, and I just want to make a couple of comments publicly that what you guys have really done for the school district, you have, first of all, well, there's a bunch of things in there, and I'm just going to summarize. You have invested in a building project to house our district office and ABE programs that will enhance our meeting areas for both students, staff, community, and school board. You have put kids first, dollars that you are spending tonight will have a direct impact to the classrooms. By acting on these plans tonight, you have kept your commitment to this community to keep class sizes low, offer a well-rounded curriculum for our students, help kids read by third grade, and offer programs that our community would like to see. By approving the newcomer center, SLIF, students with limited and/or interrupted formal education, for the first time ever, we are giving these kids that are new to country a chance to learn at the correct pace and using research-based practices. You, as a board, have touched each and every staff member by supporting their ideas to determine what they believe is necessary in their buildings in order to create a successful learning environment program or, and programs for kids. You put your faith in the experts and acknowledge to the teachers that this is important, in fact, so important that we need this to be a part of our curriculum. You can also be very proud that you just approved a state-of-the-art autos program for future engineers. You can also be very proud that we're moving, that we are moving towards creating the best band program in the state, which I commented to Pat Kunkel a couple of years ago, he'll appreciate that, by approving all the equipment needs for the district. Finally, you can all be proud of your actions to support the Vision One of our strategic plan. During these past few months, you have debated and discussed programs that really put kids first, and from the district, we thank you. The district is in great shape and we are on our way. That's all I have.
Thank you, Superintendent Sesker. All right, and that brings us then to dates to remember. May twenty-fifth will be Memorial Day with no school. May twenty-sixth at four P.M. we will have a community ed advisory council meeting in the district office. June third at three-thirty P.M. will be the Wellness Committee meeting in the district office. June fourth is the last day of school. June seventh at two P.M. is graduation at Faribault High School. June eighth at five-thirty P.M. is our next work session in the district office, and June ninth at four-thirty P.M. will be our policy meeting in the district office. I feel like there must be more. June fifteenth at seven-thirty A.M. will be the Finance Meeting in the district office. June fifteenth at three-thirty P.M. will be the Curriculum Advisory Committee meeting in the district office. June twenty-second at five-thirty P.M. will be the Regular Board meeting at our, our normal location, Faribault City Hall. Next, we will, I always forget the exact details of how we do this, we recess into a closed session, so the board will go into closed session here to discuss a negotiation on the purchase of Southern Minnesota Ward Craft Building at ten fifty-one Faribault Road, Faribault, Minnesota. Once we've had that discussion, we will then re-adjourn into an open meeting to consider a resolution to approve that. So we're going to enter a closed session, after the closed session, we will come back into open session. So we will recess at this time, everybody can take just a couple-minute break. Kathy has something she needs to...
To go under...
We need a motion to go into closed session?
So move.
I want to see a motion to go into closed session, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into closed section. Any discussion? I think Richard had the second.
Yep.
Any discussion on this item? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.